Chairman, is there a motion for approval?
There is.
voted by Commissioner Schwerer. Also seconded by Commissioner Schwerer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And so approved. Mr. Clerk, have there any executive sessions held since the last meeting?
Mr. Chairman, during the last Board of Commissioners meeting on April 25th, there was an informal discussion regarding labor litigation. There have been no executive sessions held since.
Thank you. Bring us to the first opportunity for anyone in the audience that would trust the board on a non-agenda item. Would anyone like to take advantage of this opportunity? This man.
I can now address the board now during a project, if it may, or what?
Yes, that's what we do.
Thank you.
This is right.
Time starts now, Commissioner. I think I've mentioned that before, that if this committee are silent, it's not an option, neither is stonewalling. See, the way it is supposed to work here is we have three branches of government. You're the county executive and you are the legislative branch. And you are supposed to be a check, this commissioners, you're supposed to be a gentleman prior to power of the executive branch here. Now, three commissioners here, I want to start naming people now tonight. One, the former, now the county controller, had received my narrative, plus evidence, which I have not been allowed to present there, so I'm going to bring out to Tom Creighton, third from Pastor Jones. However, and this is a critical point, this is now he said, she said, I had evidence. I will be providing you, if you will allow me to this evening, a letter that my former legislator wrote, Doug Rightly, right before he was sworn in to come to these court judges, because that matter is that important. See, abuse of the elderly by the very agency that is supposed to be caring for these home bound seniors is that important. Your continued silence, commissioners, puts you on the side of stonewalling, and puts you on the side of the people here, the personnel committing the negligence and substandard care. Yeah, before I go into the narrative, I'd like the opportunity to respond to some remarks that were made when I was no longer allowed to address them. A member of the administration here came up to the podium, to the Rostam, and referred to himself as one of the elderly vulnerable that I was talking about. No, he was not really the elderly vulnerable. The elderly vulnerable that I spoke to, for example, refers to a World War II veteran, a stroke victim that is bed bound, cannot move from the chairs of the dead by himself without help, and resigned ten times the amount of it, whoops, he see blood there as the amount that he should be on. This is just one example of many. Now, the former chairman made some, I apologize to the new commissioners, the former chairman here made some remarks in front of the commissioners, and I want to respond again to the fact that what he said was not accurate. He said, and this is the chairman of the county, one, it is implausible. Well, I'm sorry, things don't run on the basis of whether somebody thinks it's plausible or not, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. We have something in country, and I'm sorry, Dan McCrory is not here because he is also an attorney, called rules of evidence. I would say the defense of furniture that would be Mr. Browning, that I would not have believed these events to work, true, if I did not personally witness them myself. Some of you I know, Percy received mail from me with Doug Rightly's letter in it. Chairman Brown also said the personnel department is in charge. That is incorrect. Additionally, the personnel department are being, the resource department here, I mean, has the information that the OCA AAA has provided to them to cover up the negligence going on there. When I recently did a radio interview, W8790, whoever spoke for the personnel department said all manner of things that are not true. I have to pay the work rate of the county computers to validate what I am saying. The personnel department is not in charge here. You are. You are supposed to oversee the bureaucrats here. Now, my commissioner told me, in the presence of a friend who came to his office with me, that he knew the former director of this agency left involuntarily, or was dismissed involuntarily. And then he proceeded to tell me, don't tell me anything, I want to know what's happening here, don't tell me anything. Now, so the new commissioner slid whom ran on a platform of her form. When I saw Commissioner Schauer recently at an event for Congress and Dead, she said it's not important, let me think it's important, without, you know, we need to stand at the issues here. By the way, Pastor Jones has received, I think I said Pastor Jones, and Tom Creighton have received some of the evidence, and I have Doug Rightly actually read the entire transcript and looked at the evidence. So let me, let me state this issue. And that is verifiable, the disciplined attorney, Dick, which is like you're rightly referring to in his letter. This disciplined, this disciplined, now disciplined attorney was supposed to subpoena two outside medical services, one, the physician who ordered the services for Mrs. E., see, I'm going to reveal her name, of course, and the home nursing agency when their services actually started. The doctor, the physician, the oncologist referred on Big High County AAA to start these nursing services after a radical mastectomy. The woman was sent in the next day with the physician expecting nursing services to be put in the next day. This attorney did not subpoena these witnesses on purpose. So, I'd like to tell, especially Commissioner Schauer, what happened. She went into, this woman went into the hospital for a radical mastectomy. Her oncologist gave this trip to Big High County Area Agency of Asian, due to the fact that this consumer patient was told that if the home health aide and the nursing staff, Medicare person were in the home at the same time, they would not be paid. So based on that, the consumer returned this trip over to Big High County AAA. I was out of town for a week, and my granddaughter just got married in Florida. I'm sure you're just fine.
Can I interject just for a second?
Who is interjecting?
I am.
Brad.
This is around, I realize sometimes when you have a story to tell, it takes quite a while, but I'm wondering if you could maybe get to the point where you're asking the board a question.
I have two minutes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do I have to skip to that right now?
If you feel it's appropriate, yes. I'm just trying to, in your story, trying to determine what it is you'd like the board to address.
Absolutely. I'll do that right now. Big High County General Charter, page 10, section 302, G. Any legislative powers and functions to make requests to be made as a body or through a committee thereof. Such studies, audits, inquiries, and investigations relating to the affairs of the county and its government and to the conduct of any agency, officer, or employee, and in connection therewith to obtain professional and technical advice. Subpoena witnesses, administrators, and required production of books, papers, and other evidence deemed necessary.
So you're asking the board to do what?
To do the investigation. Absolutely. And just subpoena the witnesses. If you'd like, I have a copy of the letter from Michael Sager.
I'd be very happy to accept it from you. Meanwhile, as you do that, if I could ask the board if they would like to make any comments.
I would like to make a comment. Thank you, Chairman Osborne. I really don't know with what reference Mr. Brown speaking of what I recall an issue that is not important. Certainly, as she states, the elderly vulnerable, I would think, you know, we all have or had parents, and they get older, and they have issues. They are absolutely important, and I would consider them important. With reference to what you're speaking of this evening, I've never been shown anything that would actually back up any of the statements that she has made, but I just want to say that my, my statement, that the quote that she gave, that I made, or attributed to me, I certainly don't recall saying that.
I apologize.
And if it was, if I would say something like that, it certainly would not be about the elderly and vulnerable.
Okay. I will make sure that you have a copy of your narrative, because I tried to do it here a couple of times, and the evidence supporting it, and you have a couple of times. Doug Rightly, I'm trying to get everything out. It was a big break for me back to small and we drive.
Mrs. Pror, I could also ask you to provide a copy to. Would anyone else like to address this, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
I'd like to add, I'm.
Another comment that was made was, she said, she met with her commissioner, and with the record, I am her commissioner, and her point was, I said, don't tell me anything. But what I did was, I went to the county executive, had a meeting with the county executive following our meeting, and probed into this, met with Judith Johnston, also from Human Resources to find out what was going on there. So I intersected on both of those people on your behalf. So rather than, you know, just blowing you off and saying, don't tell me anything, I actually followed up on.
I apologize, Dr. Dr. D. Percy, if you, I did not know that you did that, I'm just repeating what happened at that meeting, but this still has nothing investigated, it still has been covered up. Judith Johnston would only know what the personnel from there told her. Now, the nursing supervisor, well, do you want me to continue or no?
I'll give you a couple more.
I have to address whatever questions the commissioner has for me. Scott has a question, also.
Commissioner Ron. The letter you've given us indicates that, that former Representative Rightly had asked for the Attorney General of Pennsylvania to consider the merits of your case. That's a, that's a legal proceeding. Did the Attorney General receive the information from you?
The Attorney General has, the Attorney General has turned it back over to the chief counsel of the, of the governor.
So it's in the hands of the governor's chief counsel?
Well, here are two issues, I should say Commissioner Scott, mistake, Mr. Ron, Commissioner Ron, I'm sorry. There are two issues, one's a county issue, and one's a state issue. The county issue would be the negligence and substandard care of the employees here. That would be the county issue. The state issue would be the civil service hearing, which, former legislator Rightly, Judge Rightly knows that after several attempts at trying to get them to rehear this, and the disciplined attorney, which I have a record of also, that it was a corrupt hearing. And so I'm being stonewalled there too. But, but, so there's two issues, one's a county issue, and the other is a state issue.
So the one that's in the hands of the state right now?
I'm talking to Chief Counsel, ICHLA, I think his name is A.I.C.H.L.A., and it's in, it should be addressed by the administration of the state. But the county issue would be the negligence and the substandard care. And the nursing supervisor here made a public statement that she didn't say anything, liked about anything, and do anything, and do whatever is necessary just to get to her pension. She was going to get her pension out of this place.
Are there any other comments? I think it's fair for Mrs. Brown, if we, if we can, decide to give some feedback and direction. Would any of the commissioners like to comment on that?
Commissioner Creighton and Commissioner Johnson have received evidence under, from the US mail.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Commissioner Ron.
If, if what you're suggesting here, and stuff you've told me over the past three years, it sounds to me that you're making allegations that are, you would consider to be violations of law in the care of the elderly, correct?
Well, some are. The, the one I told you about, the radical.
We're not talking about bad customer service here, we're talking about people's health and danger, correct?
They would be issues of law only if they were a nursing licensing violation. Only one is a nursing licensing violation, and other would be in terms of negligence and substandard care. Did I answer your question?
No.
Try again.
What I'm, what I'm trying to determine is, and frankly, as you know, we've had several conversations over the past three years, and I've yet to be able to determine who has jurisdiction essentially in this case.
The county has jurisdiction over the employees here.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Brown, I missed that.
The county has jurisdiction over the employees here.
I'm, I'm just waiting for you to be done. Are you done yet? Because now you've interrupted me three times while I was trying to ask you a question, and each time you misinterpreted the question.
Try.
I'm wondering if maybe some of the difficulty you're experiencing is because you don't understand the questions that I'm trying to ask. I'm trying to be helpful to you as possible.
Okay, thank you.
And unfortunately, I can't yet determine whether you're making an allegation that would suggest that police, the district attorney, the health authorities of the state of Pennsylvania ought to be involved, or it's an ordinary oversight thing that the Board of Commissioners would be engaged in on a regular basis. But it sounds to me like the charges that you're making are very serious charges that involve the health and safety of people who are in the care of people of the county. That would be not just a civil complaint, that would be a potential criminal issue. And I know at least part of your case is in the hands of the governor's attorney at this point, it was in the hands of the Attorney General before that.
Correct.
And, and I know that a number of people have all spoken to you and tried to understand your case, but it's still, your perception of being stonewalled may be just that people aren't able to convince you that if you've got a legal issue, you've got to take it to the courts.
The court will not hear it because the disciplinary account of the attorney happened after the civil service hearing. So I cannot get into court. We cannot get the evidence of the disciplined attorney into common law court because it's called, or the record, it happened after the record was created. So it's now in the hands of the administration of the state, but the county employees' negligence is something that is supposed to be overseen here. I mean, Commissioner Ron, the matter is so serious, the events that I witnessed, and I come back to school, I'm in training for my masters in public health discipline, and December 2010, I earned a graduate certificate in healthcare management. I have evidence to present of this negligence, and the perjury that took place on the witness stand.
Are there any other commissioner comments? And I'd like to suggest to the board that we propose to Mrs. Brown, we are a legislative body, and we opt not to get involved in this personnel matter.
What about the investigation?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Brown, are the comments on the lines, do you support that position?
I agree.
Does anyone not support that position on the board?
Well, I think there are, there are two different questions here. If, if there is evidence that there is behavior in this situation that's inappropriate, I do, I do think we have obligation to pursue, pursue, not, not as a legislative matter, but, you know, oversight of the law. Frankly, I haven't seen any of that evidence, I don't know any of the specifics, so beyond that, you know, I can't speak, but I, I think there could be circumstances where we do have a role to play, that does not specifically entail legislation, that might entail an investigation of some kind. And I'm willing to do that when and if it's appropriate. I haven't seen any evidence to this point that it is, but I am willing to do that when I've used such evidence. So when I feel that the administration is not responding, or the issue is serious enough that it needs to have public review.
Thank you, Commissioner Massiotti. I'm sorry, I, I forgot if you are an attorney or a state.
No, I'm not, I'm not a attorney.
Okay. I, I will hope, I must say this, we provide the oversight, I believe that you should be providing, and the Board of Commissioners will do that investigation. I will provide, I will put together a pack for you to stand in your hands with, Commissioner Creighton and Commissioner Jones, which is, has narrative, and I'll have the evidence for you.
I guess what I say is, up to this point, I haven't seen any evidence, and I wouldn't be in favor of suggesting that we conduct that investigation at this point.
When I get your interview. Can I make a recommendation, yes? Just to clarify, just to clarify, so that we can kind of tie a bow on this. It is, it is required that the board active, the board's investigative authority of power is an investigative authority of power that is granted not to any one individual commissioner collectively as a board.
Correct.
Trying to hash it out, and this platform won't be effective, what will be effective to get what you want would be that five of us would have to be convinced that there is sufficient evidence to do something that is very rarely done by this body. And that is to assume that investigative authority, and put the county, put the administration to that very, very public process. I think that is something that should not be rushed into very, very haphazardly. And to say to you that within any relatively short amount of time, there can be a reasonable answer to your satisfaction that would be given, I think that would be a disservice to you. What I would suggest to this body is, we take the information, each person searches their conscience, searches their soul, maybe you might want to have some clarifying discussions, and then at some point, we determine, once and for all, finally done, whether this is something that we move forward with, or this is something that we say, this is not within the scope of our board. Because I, I just want you to understand that to act on that investigative authority, that's a very sober, very, very sober responsibility that's given to us, and it should not be entered into. And that's not a statement on the merit of it, but simply that's not something that should be entered into very, very haphazardly, because it's done very, very seldomly by this body. And it would require the convincing of members of this board to act collectively, not any one individual collectively.
Commissioner Jones, I think taking up on your thoughts and complimenting Commissioner Massiotti's comment. I think what I, what I would like to do with this matter is turn this over to our Human Services Committee, have them study the matter, and come back to the full board with the recommendation of what we're doing. So you want us?
Human Services Committee person.
Commissioner Schwerer is the, is the chair of Human Services Committee? Commissioner Doherty?
Yes, I would make one suggestion, that Mr. Brown bring this in such a way that it's very succinct. Make sure you, you know, instead of inundating the committee with a lot of information, try to keep it as short as possible, and bring in one or two major questions that you would like the committee to answer.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwerer, I'll, I'll come on you then to set up the pack for the committee. Okay. Would anyone else like to address the board on agenda items? Ms. Blue Rock.
Pretty neat. Joe Lurk, Lower McCunky Township, four seasons in farming. I have three little items to talk about. The first one, I would like to assure and clear with the commissioners that I have been contacted the last time, I've had concern about where we stood with interviews and things like that. So we have been contacted by Chief Assistant Hunker. He's coming out to our community since we have lived since 36. He's been kind enough to break it down into four hours, five, four different models. One model is like 89 alone. So we'll have the same issues on 89, and he can resolve that really fast. So he's coming out on the 17th, and then at the end of the session, if anybody has a particular problem, rather than tie up the whole thing, they can maybe write something down and give it to him. So it's a very fine answer to it, and I thank the commissioners for pursuing it. The second thing is, I want to throw out kudos to our District Number Two, Percy Doherty. Yesterday, we had a full four hours or more at the community center at Lower McCunky Township, thousands coming through. And my emphasis was on safety. And Mr. Doherty was so kind to provide me with some safety things. More importantly, Percy, I want to tell you, those hand things, one and a half an hour, I could have had two thousand of them. All the women grabbed them, put them in their purses and everything else, what a neat little thing.
Hand things, tazes? No, it was a hand cleaner from Tom Nirdine's office.
It was, it was terrific. We had a great day, and it was very successful. Not only did the county provide me, but the city of Allentown provided me, Washington provided me, I had worn information unbelievable. I could break everything down between youth, teenager, and adult, it was wonderful. Okay. The third item is for some help. I've addressed the township of Lower McCunky about this great flood issue we have. Now, we were able to get a grant from the federal government that we have purchased three houses. These poor people on Spring Creek Road were purchasing the houses and letting them get out, because what would these poor people do? Now, the problem is we talked about cause and effect, okay? It works way up there. Now, I addressed the township the other night, and I, I pointed out to the township, unfortunately, the previous administrations were given a $50,000 grant, along with upper McCunky $50,000 grant, and they were supposed to use that money to investigate, to come up with a plan, what could they do for this so-called Lehigh Water Ship, to help in the flooding thing. I'm not proud, but our township turned one down, probably. We got a new administration now. I don't think they would do anything like that if they were given a grant. But the township has said to me, hands off, they can't touch the issue. Now, I want to move forward, I've gone to Doug Rightly's old office, now that Brian McKendy is in, I went to the senior advisor there, and he said they were working on the issue a number of years ago, somehow a table. So he's going to revisit with Brian and help me to a certain degree. But I'm now coming to the county level because maybe you people know some things of the direction. This is the Lehigh Water Ship. I realized there's an agency, so if you touch this thing, next thing you know, we're involved with five and six and seven other agencies. What I'm really after is, hopefully, grant money, that we can dredge the Lehigh Water Ship area that comes from Albertus all the way down. All this is doing is creating dams, and old trees are falling in, nobody's doing anything about it, it's just growing and growing, and it's getting worse and worse. And every time it rains, Spring Creek Road is closed, it's a disaster. So I'm just here appealing, maybe you have some thoughts, what direction? And I go, the county get involved, or is the county not involved? They can't do anything.
Commissioner Doherty?
Well, two things, starting off with your kudos, I cannot take all the credit, the Alentown, there is the fact.
Thank you very much.
The late work to get things together, Tom Lirby from Emergency Services donated the items. Secondly, in terms of the flooding, this board has been involved in that process, many of the new board members are not cognizant of what we've been involved in in the past, but we have a county comprehensive plan, which is approved by this board, which has recommended that the area upstream from where you live be an agricultural preservation district. And against the county comprehensive plan, Lower McCunky Township has decided to rezone much of the property between Route 100 and Albertus as a residential warehouse and a commercial zone out through there. much of the property between Route one hundred and Albertus as a residential warehouse and a commercial zone out through there. So this is contrary to the county comprehensive plan. And a group of your fellow citizens has taken the township to court on this, and the case has been ruled upon by Lehigh County Court as illegal change in the zoning there. And this has been forwarded to the state court. So this is something that probably will be decided maybe this June or July. But in terms of the problem out there, the county has been working on this for some years, and there's something called the Act one fifty-seven plan. That is done by the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, that was approved by this particular commission here, in terms of studying the runoff and recommendations to be made out there. So the county has been involved in many cases in what is going on there. And also downstream from you, the county has helped the township purchase some of the property downstream in the Camp Olympic area, to ensure that area is not developed and further increase the problem. This is a problem not just for your neighborhood, but this is a problem even for the city of Allentown, which gets its water out of that particular creek. So further development out there is going to degrade the quality of that stream even further. So I share with you many of your concerns, our comprehensive plan agrees with you in terms of your concerns, and our water resources legislation. But the problem is, the county, especially through our planning agency, only has a recommendation that we can make to the particular township, and the township can just thumb its nose at our recommendation and do virtually anything it wishes to do. This is a problem with the municipalities. Planning code in state Pennsylvania, where the county plan and municipal plans do not have to agree with each other. There should be agreement. We should be able to work that out, but that's not the case.
Can I respond to some of your questions? Thank you. The first thing I'd like to point out is, a lot of in that area, they have, prior to reassessing, there's been a change from a five-hundred-year flood to a hundred-year flood plane for a number of people. And that really hurts these people in the reassessment. Some of that wasn't taken into account, that they are now a hundred-year. So that's something they'll have to bring up in the reassessment review, because they've been hurt badly by that. I know individuals have been told at the mortgage company, they have to pay additional twenty-three hundred dollars premium because of now a hundred-year thing, and there's nothing they can do about it. Mortgage company says you don't pay the premium, hook up will be mortgaged. So that's one issue. The second issue that you brought up, about the changing of the zoning and so forth, you may or may not be aware that the township passed the other night resolution on that particular issue, and I think it's called the Spring Creek Development. And unanimously, they passed it. And I know what you're talking about, more warehousing, more roads, and so forth, create more problems. Water isn't going into the ground. The development and so forth, being industrial and so forth, just create more problems. Water isn't going anywhere. It's not going into the ground as it should be, okay? But we'll have to wait to see. As far as my feelings, my concerns, what I like to see is, I know the county did a terrific job years ago. You had the Corps of Engineers come in, did a terrific job out there at what is called the Lehigh Fields, all those soccer fields and everything else. And the value that was added to the county was unbelievable. And the Corps of Engineers, the equipment they brought in, the things they did was wonderful. Gee, I'd like to see maybe if something like that could be done in the Spring Creek, a little Lehigh thing. Again, I guess we have to be careful here, there's a number of agencies involved and so forth. Mr. Doherty, I think the Board that we have present isn't going to flunk and turn away and not listen to the county making some suggestions. The zoning thing and so forth, I don't think it's, that is such a big issue that's been going on for two years. It's in the courts, who knows, it may be dismissed. But I'm just here to see, and you explain some of it to me, about the problem of what we're trying to do. I'd love to have the Corps of Engineers come in and do some drilling all the way down to help these people that are caught in that flood problem. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Blue Rock. Any other comments for Mr. Blue Rock? Would anyone else like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Okay, that brings us to our main agenda. New items for chair's review. Mr. Clerk, we have any appointments for this evening?
No, not this evening.
Given that, would please introduce Bill two thousand twelve dash thirteen.
Commissioner, Bill two thousand twelve dash thirteen, approving a deed of easement right of way to the Copley Way Oswell Authority, sponsored by Commissioner Scheller.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
By my orders, the Board of Commissioners approves a grant of deed of easement right of way to the Copley Way Oswell Authority. The proposed easement is located in the Whitehall Township, along Reliance Street. It's attached to its today.
Thank you. This was discussed first in committee on April twenty-fifth, and I'd like to invite sponsor comments here, Commissioner Scheller.
Yes, as I said, on April twenty-fifth, this was to allow a connector to be built. Since our committee meeting and our first presentation of this bill, there really didn't go no comments or anything else, and it was brought forward for favorable approval this evening.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Citizen input. All those in favor of approving Commissioner Bill two thousand twelve dash thirteen, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk, may I ask if you'd announce two thousand twelve dash fourteen, please?
Commissioner Bill two thousand twelve dash fourteen, approving the lease agreement between the county of Lehigh and Oswald Farms, sponsored by Commissioner Scheller.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
By my orders, the Board of Commissioners approves a lease of county agricultural property to Oswald Farms, the property located in the Whitehall Township. Order to approval is required for the transfer of any interest in county property to Section three ten, eight six, and a long charter.
Thank you. This bill also was discussed first in our committee meeting of, Plank Commission meeting of April twenty-fifth. Sponsor comments, Commissioner Scheller.
Yes, this had its first reading at our last meeting also. The property had been leased to the farm land for some time. A request for bid was put out for the property, and Oswald was the only one to respond, Oswald Farms was the only one to respond. It's brought forward for favorable approval for approval tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Scheller. Any other Commissioner comments? Citizen input. All those in favor of approving Bill two thousand twelve dash fourteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk, would you please announce Bill two thousand twelve dash fifteen?
Commissioner Bill two thousand twelve dash fifteen, approving a lease with the seed farm for forty-three acres in upper and lower village townships, sponsored by Commissioner Scheller.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
By my orders, the Board of Commissioners approves a lease of county property to the seed farm. The purpose of the lease is to provide cooperation in the agricultural initiative program which was established by ordinance two thousand and nine, number one, the decree. And once again, order to approval is required pursuant to Section three ten, eight six, like a long charter.
Thank you. This bill also was discussed first in committee, Plank Committee on April twenty-fifth. Commissioner Scheller, you don't get a break here yet.
I know. It's okay. Again, this is a incubator project. It's, as I said in the last meeting, it's about teaching people how to farm and how to farm better. And again, it was discussed at our last meeting, Commissioners' meeting, and I had no comments or questions since then, and it was brought forward by the committee for a favorable approval by the Board.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Citizen input. All those in favor of approving Bill two thousand twelve dash fifteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Bill passes unanimously. Or are there any motions that we brought forward this evening? Very good. Mr. Clerk, may I ask if you can introduce Resolution two thousand twelve dash thirty-one, please?
Resolution two thousand twelve dash thirty-one honoring Master Sergeant Stephen A. Borland, U.S. Ensign Seized Retired for faithful service to Core Country and students of William Allen High School. This resolution is sponsored by Commissioners Osborne and Schwer.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is a resolution that I'm proud to support along with Commissioner Schwer as its sponsor. As Mr. Clerk has mentioned, Master Sergeant Stephen Borland has served our country well and with honor for twenty-three years. He was a naval science instructor for the William Allen High School, Navy Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, position held for twenty years. Also, Master Sergeant oversaw thousands of high school cadets, teaching them military structure and discipline. It's my pleasure through this resolution to thank Master Sergeant Stephen Borland, United States Marine Corps retired. Any other Commissioner comments? Citizen input.
Lotto eleven oh one, South Howard Street, Allentown. I take it by Commissioner Jones, your mark is going to be voting yes on this resolution? I just want to thank you for putting this to a full vote. I think it shows that at a time where Republicans and Democrats can be at odds with each other, that both sides can come together in honor of people that given pretty much their whole life since they were eighteen, since he was eighteen years old, to his country, first as a Marine in combat, and then as a naval science instructor. And just a sidebar, he wasn't just a naval science instructor to the students, he was a mentor, he was a friend, he was someone you could go to when you had trouble with your parents. Over the years, he was at William Allen High School, he saw a different group of students come from when he started to when he finished, and he really helped these students become successful in their lives. I also want to reiterate that this is a surprise party that we're planning for him, so I asked the members of the press to please respect that until after June second. It will be held at the Allentown Brew Works, June second, starting at seven p.m. He will arrive at seven thirty. Everybody's welcome to attend, and we also have a small locker at the door and a cash bar available on each side. Commissioner doesn't care if there's a cash bar. But again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duke. Any other citizen input? All those in favor of approving Resolution two thousand twelve dash thirty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously. Congratulations. Mr. Clerk, please announce Resolution two thousand twelve dash thirty-two.
Resolution two thousand twelve dash thirty-two, authorizing the offering for lease of approximately nineteen acres of agricultural land in Upper McCunky Township, sponsored by Commissioner Scheller.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
The purpose of this resolution is to authorize the offering of county agricultural land for lease located in Upper McCunky Township. And section eight eleven of the Administrative Code requires the Board of Commissioners approve the offering of county property for lease.
Thank you. This was discussed in Plank Committee meeting of this evening, and sponsor comments, Commissioner Scheller.
Yes, this is nineteen point oh seven six acres of county land. It's located near the treatment plant, adjacent actually, which is, it borders on Routes one hundred and two twenty-two. And over the past number of years, the county owns this land, and we pay to maintain it. And this would be leasing the land for farmland, so that actually it would create a source of income for the county. And there could be other auctions for the land, but at this point, I think it would be a good idea to go out and lease the land for farmland, that gives some good use out of some of the county already has. The committee has voted and put forth a unanimous vote for favorable approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Scheller. Any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Doherty?
I'm all for this, keep it in farmland, it's upstream from Joe's house, and keep it in farmland, and keep that water going down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a diagram of the land that I can submit for the minutes, if anyone wants to see it.
Great. Commissioner Scheller, in addition to sending this way, can you send the county to your left? Or? Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Citizen input. Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution twenty twelve dash thirty-two, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk, would you please announce Resolution twenty twelve dash thirty-three?
Resolution twenty twelve dash thirty-three, approving professional services agreement with Quantum Incorporated, sponsored by Commissioner Jones.
Madam Solicitor.
Purpose of this resolution is to approve a professional services agreement with Quantum Incorporated to provide interpretation and translation services for the thirty-first Judiciary District in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Resolution approval is required for contracts, all professional services in excess of ten thousand dollars pursuant to eight oh one, point one B, of Lake County Administrative Code.
Thank you. This was discussed this evening in Judiciary Corrections Committee. Sponsor comments, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this comes through on an annual basis, these interpretation services are actually required to be able to ensure that people get fair trials. The compensation set for this is capped at fifty thousand dollars a year. However, we've been told that the average dollar spent each year is around ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Ross.
And this is something that somebody from the courts would have to answer, but I'm just curious, what percentage of people come through the court system are speaking in a language other than English? If you know.
That's a difficult question. I mean, and a lot of times, if you're part of a problem, you can get people to claim they don't understand English. And children require, required. Yeah, it does happen. But no, I would say probably, considering that we have a large Spanish-speaking population in the city, it's not an overwhelming number, but it's probably somewhere in the range of any twenty percent.
Okay. Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments? Citizen input. All those in favor of approving Resolution two thousand twelve dash thirty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Clerk, would you please introduce Resolution two thousand twelve dash thirty-four?
Resolution two thousand twelve dash thirty-four, approving a professional services agreement with certified testing laboratories incorporated, sponsored by Commissioner Masseyati.
Madam Solicitor.
The purpose of this resolution is to approve a professional services agreement with certified testing laboratories for construction testing and special inspection services for the Lake County detoxification facility project. Once again, resolution approval is required pursuant to section eight oh one, point one B, of Lake County Administrative Code.
Thank you. This was discussed this evening in the General Services Committee, and I'd like to ask for sponsor comments, Commissioner Masseyati.
Yes, this is an agreement for testing services that are required for the construction of the Lehigh County detoxification facility. Sorry, project. It's anticipated to cost twenty-four thousand dollars, as said, it's in, so it's required testing for the building that's going to be constructed for the detoxification center, which is to be funded by Health Choices Funding, which is a county program that's funded by a state as per revenue. The total project is anticipated to cost four point five million. Construction is anticipated to cost three point six million, and this contract is for the required testing for that construction.
Thank you, Commissioner Masseyati.
I guess I should just say it was reviewed in committee, and there was a recommendation for, unanimous recommendation for approval by the Board.
Excuse me, just a second. Any other Commissioner comments? Citizen input. All those in favor of approving Resolution two thousand twelve dash thirty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk, would you please announce Resolution two thousand twelve dash thirty-five?
Resolution two thousand twelve dash thirty-five, approving a professional services agreement with Redwood Toxicology Laboratory Incorporated, sponsored by Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
The purpose of this resolution is to approve a professional services agreement with Redwood Toxicology Laboratories Incorporated for laboratory drug and alcohol testing services. Resolution approval is required for contracts for professional services pursuant to section eight oh one, point one B, of Lake County Administrative Code.
Thank you. This also was discussed this evening in the Judiciary Corrections Committee. Sponsor comments, Commissioner? Sponsor comments, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular testing facility is an FDA-approved testing site. The reason why that's important is, they're primarily used to test for these synthetic drugs that are out there now. The county does use a testing, but it's not, the results aren't confirmable in court. This provides a approved testing site that the court will take their word versus the methods that we use. Compensation for this is set at $30,000 a year.
Fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Any other commissioner comments? Citizen input? All those in favor of approving Resolution 2012-35, please say aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk, would you please introduce Resolution 2012-36?
Resolution 2012-36, celebrating the 50th anniversary of Lehigh's Economic Advancement Project Incorporated and North Hampton County New Jobs Corps. This resolution sponsored by Commissioner Osborne.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The occasion here is on May 15th Tuesday. Lehigh Valley Economic Development Corporation is hosting a special luncheon with Pennsylvania Governor Tom Corbett to honor the 50th anniversary of Lehigh's Economic Advancement Project Incorporated and North Hampton County New Jobs Corps. This resolution basically applauds their role in the creation and retention of thousands of jobs in the last 50 years, thus highlighting the importance of local economic development efforts. Are there any commissioner comments? Citizen input?
In my 50 years of my business life, I got involved with a number of projects, probably at least four or five through the Lehigh Valley Economic, and believe it or not, I moved over and I was in North Hampton. The two executives of those organizations, I can remember, Cy Gutman, being a wonderful man, bringing back trucks here and all the things. They were very helpful in helping me launch businesses that were already in existence and disoutstanding of the organizations. North Hampton County, I don't remember the gentleman's name at the moment, senior at the moment, he was there for years and years, and did a wonderful job for our fabricating plant that we had out of 512. We built Seattle Hospital, we built the medical center, we built churches, we built schools, and so forth. And because of what they did for us, we were able to double our employees, put night shifts on, and really become a very thriving company. So my only comment this year is wonderful. They have done great both organizations in 50 years, but my, oh, that's awesome.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Dockerty. Any other citizen input? All those in favor of approving Resolution 2012-36, please say aye. Mr. Clerk, would you please introduce, introduce Commissioner Bill 2012-16?
Commissioner Bill 2012-16, approving the transfer of real estate to the township of Whitehall for the expansion of the Jordan Creek Greenway, sponsored by Commissioner Scheller.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor.
The purpose of this ordinance is to approve the transfer of approximately 5.04 acres of county-owned property to the township of Whitehall. Property is located on the east side of Mickley Road and will extend the Jordan Creek Greenway project. Section 310-86 of the Administrative Code provides that all conveyances of county-owned vehicles are subject to approval via ordinance by the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. This particular bill was discussed in the planning committee early this evening. Sponsor comments, Commissioner Scheller.
Thank you, Chairman. About this time last year, the county transferred 20-plus acres, 20.3 acres, of our Jordan Creek Parkway lands to the Jordan Creek and Whitehall, to that township. This is the remaining five acres that was adjacent to that, 5.8 acres that was adjacent to that. It goes up to the Mickley Bridge, and in doing, making this transfer to the township, then it no longer is county land, it is no longer maintained by the county, and it allows the township to have that land to use only for farmland for the development of the Jordan Creek Parkway.
Thank you, Commissioner Scheller. Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Ross?
This is something we discussed a little bit in committee, but it might be useful if Mr. Salt is able to kind of explain why we're giving away a piece of land to a township that will be developed into a greenway that we're in total spending about a million dollars to develop. It just, it's still kind of a strange concept to me. I've heard your explanation, but I think it might be useful in a public setting to clarify that. In other words, you know, why is it a burden off of our backs that we don't have to maintain it, but it's a blessing to the township to receive it?
I wish I could answer that. As I explained to the committee, it's not something I, as a township executive, would do, but they seem to want to take it, are willing to take it, and for us, it's land that right now we need to maintain. And it will remain farmland essentially the same as it is now, and we won't have to maintain it. I don't, I don't see it as a win for them, but they, they're willing and just and want to take it off our hands.
I could be wrong about this, but I'm guessing if the shoe were on the other foot, we might have to buy the land from them.
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, it's, it's farmland. You know, if we, if we still own the land, we would put the, we would put the trail through there, the Jordan Greenway Trail, and then it would be a Jordan Greenway Trail on county land. They're very interested in seeing it at them, so they're willing to take it. It's something that, the concept was put together before, before I stepped into this position. I don't know why they, why they want to assume the burden, but they do.
Next time you talk to a basketball player? This is, it just seems very peculiar to me that...
Look, I'm the tax, I'm the taxpayer up there.
What's that?
So it will take the burden off of all the county taxes.
And put it on you?
And put it on me.
Okay. Feel better about it now?
Commissioner Dockerty?
Yes, please don't question this anymore. Let's get rid of it so we don't have to responsible. Oh, about a gift for us.
The bridge is part of it?
In our dreams, I wish the bridge were part of it.
The bridge is not a part of this, just to make it clear. The committee voted and did vote positively to bring it to the board for board to vote our next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Scheller.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Citizen input? Commissioner Bill 2012-16 has received its first reading, it'll be scheduled for a vote in our next meeting. Brings us to the committee reports. Again, as a third reminder, maybe, we agreed as a board to just discuss those items that happened previously, previously been discussed in the general public session here. Now we'll go through the committee's in order, Development Committee, Commissioner Parkes appeared this evening, nothing was discussed in the committee. General Services, Commissioner Masiotti?
No additional items for discussion.
Human Services, Commissioner Schwer?
No meetings, so I'll do the report.
Intergovernmental unemployment, Commissioner Ross?
The first time this year, no meeting.
Judiciary and Corrections, Commissioner Jones?
Nothing outside of what was discussed in the agenda.
Planning Committee, Commissioner Scheller?
Nothing outside of what was discussed in the committee this evening.
Administrative Committee, Commissioner Dockerty?
Oh, I hate to break the trend here, but on Wednesday, June 20th at 6:00